Okay, welcome to the Rutland Town Planning Commission. This is Thursday, April eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Okay, welcome everyone. We have Andy McCain, who is attending but not voting this evening. And here in the town office, we've got just about everyone. We've got Jim Hall, an alternate who will be voting, Sherman, regular, Mary Beth, and Dana, and Jerry, myself as regulars in voting, and Norm, you'll be voting. Okay. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I have one possible suggestion. To add to the old business, the ad hoc committee, which was voted on last time and.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that with the housing survey. But we probably should add Bill's revised subdivision forms to all business, if that's okay with the maker of the motion.
It is.
And the seconder of the motion?
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? The agenda with that one change? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I think we can go right past public comment and go into the public hearing for nine thirty US Route four. You may want to sit in the first row so that microphone can pick you up. Thank you. So this is the public hearing on a final subdivision application by Paul and Paula McNeil. It's being held here in April eighteenth. The applicant has proposed to subdivide a two point six seven plus or minus acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel A is one point seventeen plus or minus acres. Parcel B is one and a half plus or minus acres. The applicant has requested the following full waiver request pursuant to the regulations for the town. Part seven, eleven, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-four. The land is located in the town of Rutland off US Route four east. It's bound to the north by the lands of Knessh- Conco.
I think that's supposed to be Croissantco with an R, but I'm not sure.
Croissantco and Thurston Properties LLC. To the west by the land of nine thirty US Route four east and to the south and east by the land of Morel House LLC. The application has been completed and is here at the town municipal building. And this is the final subdivision hearing for the subdivision. Do you have anything new to add from the last time you were here? Okay. Any questions? Of Mr. McNeil? Okay.
Bill, everything turned in according to?
Yes.
All I need to know.
Okay.
Move to approve the request for subdivision as per the subdivision notice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Okay, I guess we're ready for the vote. So all those will just in the agenda, the vote is actually in the old business, but it's, it's, they're connected. Do you have any questions of us? Okay. So well, here's the vote. All those in favor of this two lot subdivision at nine thirty US Route four A, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I'm abstaining. I'm sorry.
Oh, me too.
Just because I wasn't here for the discussion.
Same for me. Yeah.
Okay, so so five. Thanks. Okay, it's passed.
Thank you.
It's good.
There's two abstentions and there's.
It's considered unanimous because there are two abstentions and we have a quorum.
Sherman and Mary Beth.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't pick up Mary Beth. Thank you.
So we'll need the Mylar in ninety days. Anything else, Bill, that?
When he brings in the filing fee, but that's it.
Okay, I get it in.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's it. Yep, you are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My daughter's spelling me last time.
Okay. So we're down in old business and so the housing survey, reviewing that from the regional planning commission. So Norm and everyone else, the committee wasn't able to find the time to meet, but I think we can do everything tonight. That
The subcommittee?
The subcommittee, yes. The ad hoc subcommittee.
That was the one that we were part of, that you and I and Mary Beth were both.
Right, right. Yeah. So, so we weren't able to meet. I think we're okay.
I thought it was supposed to be in the future.
You weren't here, were you?
I was here at the last meeting.
Those dates went in the future from this meeting?
They were in the future, but because we're meeting before, we figured we'd just talk about it.
Yeah.
Somehow I missed that. That wasn't the unit.
It was set up and we, we thought we would be meeting between our regular meetings, but it didn't happen. So we, everyone should have a copy of this. It would be great to get back to the select board for something and for us to do something, to make some decisions tonight. I asked Logan at the Regional Planning Commission, the Housing Navigator, Logan, he had some ideas and he did. So we can easily give this to the select board. But I'm thinking that maybe if we do a little interpretation tonight, maybe a summary and touch on some of the comments that have already been made and any others that are made tonight. That would be plenty for them. So a couple of leading questions that Logan posed. How is housing talked about in Rutland Town? What housing ideas have been thought of historically? What housing ideas have been discussed in the past? What ideas, projects, or policies have garnered public support and resistance in the past? So leave, those are some questions we can talk about tonight. Anything else that you noticed in the survey that you think should be highlighted?
We don't have a copy of that, do we?
No.
So anyway, Bill could copy that for us. I mean, it's just easier for me if I'm looking at questions visually rather.
The one we had last week?
No, it's one I brought in. It's just an email. It gets, yeah.
It's easier for me to wrap my mind around something if I'm looking at the question rather than trying to hold it in my mind and
Okay, well, yeah, if Bill gets a chance. So how is housing talked about in Rutland Town?
I don't know that it is really.
People don't seem to be concerned about it. Is that what you're saying?
I don't hear anything one way or the other. The only thing that I have heard around housing was focused around the short term rental. That's the only time that I have heard housing be a conversation. And it was those people who felt that short term rentals were taking away from the housing stock. That that's about the only thing that I've heard. Personally, I have a perspective on that. But talking to myself, I don't think counts. So I don't know.
And so I've had a few friends who have tried to find houses and it took years. And we're trying to find a house in like Rutland Town or Mendon. And then I've heard of people just at different businesses, credit union and the hospital, whose staff can't find housing. I mean, that's more than just Rutland Town, but.
But we're probably talking about more than Rutland Town.
Right, yeah.
Because, you know, the economic activity, you know, can impact us all, help us all.
So I have heard from several different people that either live here already and just need, you know, are renting and want to buy a house and can or.
Yeah, and I, I work with some young people. One when they can't find apartments in, in the Rutland area. One lives in Fairhaven. One lives in, in Lester and another lives in Brandon. And Logan lives in Burlington by choice, but.
Working at Brock, I know that there are a lot of people who struggle with regular shelter. But people aren't talking about it. I did hear one story that someone said they would rather be on the street. This was related multiple steps away. I didn't hear it directly. But they'd rather be on the street than under a under a a bridge where they knew they would be safe rather than going through the rigmarole of trying to get into the system to find housing. I can't confirm or deny that. That's a story that was told to me in my work at Brock. I do know that there are some people that are fiercely struggling to hold on to what little housing they do have. Could be a small apartment. Rents are going up. They're struggling to find the the means to continue to pay that because they're on some type of fixed income.
Sale prices are going up too again.
But so we're talking about just maybe a, a small apartment within a, a complex. I know that there are vouchers still available to the, what is it, the Rutland Housing Authority or something like that. But I don't have enough experience in that area to make an informed comment, but. I know that most of the HUD housing or the subsidized housing at, at the HUD level, it has a waiting list.
Yeah, and, and let's remember, we're talking about not only affordable housing, but housing for, for others too. Starter homes. Larger homes for larger, for growing families and things like that.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, I, I deal with a specific clientele at, at Brock. So I'm only giving you the perspective of what I haven't become aware of.
Right.
Not that anybody at Brock is really talking about.
Okay, welcome Howard.
Hi, good evening. I'm sorry I'm a little late. I had to run to the drugstore and I got tied up. But I'm here.
So Will, Jim, I think since he's here now, since he was just running late. You're the second alternate, I believe. So you're welcome to join in the discussion and I want to turn to you next, actually, but I, you won't be voting. Night.
I'll slip through it.
So, so that, that second question, what housing ideas, can we help you? What housing ideas have been thought of historically?
May I ask a question before we?
Okay.
How might this question be helpful to us?
Um, I Jim has made some comments that and he made them, you know, at the last meeting, that the survey didn't include any of the history of the town in there, any, any of that context, right? And also this could apply to any ideas that have been tried in the past and worked or didn't work.
Okay.
I think that one of the things we have to do early on in this is to make a determination of the people that are predominantly in a, in a housing problem of, that don't have housing. Are they, were they displaced or were they Rutland Town residents for a long period of time and were displaced or, or what's the story? I'm sure that when you get into analyzing the answers to those questions, you're gonna have more than one or two reasons. The I've done a lot of thinking about this housing thing and I, I really don't know how we're gonna get enough people to respond or really get answers that are gonna be suitable for going forward with grants and that kind of thing. I, you know. I don't know. I don't know how that's gonna be done. That's my point. I, I think, I think we have to dig deeper in finding out the reason we're, we're in short supply of housing.
Dig deeper. Yeah, Norm.
Yeah, Jim rang a bell. One of my concerns is that the response was so, it's little over one percent of the population, maybe two percent of the population of Rutland Town. It was under it was eighty-seven less, it was about sixty-five people. And I just don't know if that I just, you know more about these kind of things than me.
Statistically, that's, that's that's enough.
Is it?
Yeah.
One percent, two percent? Okay. I mean, it's a question that's been kind of kicking around in my head too is whether the sample was strong enough to tell us anything.
Okay.
I guess that's what Jim was saying, basically.
Extrapolating on, on that, Barbara, my comment would be that you, you can take whatever data you get, whatever your sampling sizes, unless it's really terribly small, but if you take that and you extrapolate, you can at least create questions off of those, like the questions you've come to us. But I, I think that it would be helpful for us to generate additional questions this evening, which is what, what was the intent, I think, of my initial, initial suggestion that we uh, form a group to, to look at that and generate more questions. So I think our time this evening might be better spent rather than trying to answer questions by developing the types of questions that we think would be meaningful.
Okay, do you have one to start off with?
Uh, I, I can come up with one in the next three to five minutes, but I, I don't have one off the top of my head. If I remember correctly, I don't even think it's in the minutes, but what Logan was saying is that we, we have a, a, a population transition. And we have a lot of relatively larger homes owned by single or two people older couples. And they, the homes have more capacity than is needed for the few people who live in them. My comment to Logan at that point in time, if my memory serves me correctly, was maybe we're talking about not a specific shortage, but an allocation of resources. And we should look at it from that perspective. Maybe I can come up with a question about that. I know that the state has offered, and, and I think there's, there's a review process going on currently. Grants for homeowners to, of up to fifty thousand dollars to be able to renovate their homes, that, that money would come from the state with a small contribution from the homeowner to create either adjacent dwellings or a a, a separate dwelling within the home to create more capacity. I think that there's some value to that. Do I know what the question is that I would ask? Not in the two minutes that I've been rambling.
I got a question that could go with that is
There you go.
How could, how could anybody renovate an apartment for fifty grand?
Oh, yeah.
It is just, it's, it's not feasible today. I know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be a jerk here. It's just not feasible. The kitchen cabinets and appliances alone could be forty.
Yeah, I know.
So it just, that's the problem. If the state wants to cough up a hundred, now you're talking. Now you're getting close, but fifty just doesn't do it.
Top of the bucket, yeah.
What was the source of that funding?
I don't know who's doing that. It's the state.
It is the state. And I know that the neighbor works is involved in implementing those grants.
Yeah, it's first, you have to be creating a new space.
Yeah.
Or renovating an existing space that would be.
It was never used as rental.
That's correct. So for example, if you have, you know, a bi-level home and you've got, you know, a bathroom, say on the lower level, I'm just making it up. Bathroom on the lower level, bedroom on the lower level, living area that you would have to put in some type of kitchenette
Right.
or something to be able to accommodate an autonomous space that could be rented for you know, an efficiency or a one bedroom or something like that. I, I can probably come up with that later, Barbara.
But it is, the state is, is, it's, I, I've known a couple of people that have done it. And I worked on one in Woodstock and the state is being extremely, extremely tenuous on getting that done. So they're, they're offering a great thing, but you can't reel it in and be pains in the ass at the same time. You know, you gotta, you gotta make it possible for people to do it.
There are a number of pieces of legislation, Jerry, that have come out that are supposed to be designed to help people.
Yeah.
But there are so many hoops.
Red tape.
Rings and red tape attached that it is virtually impossible for people to take advantage.
Right.
In fact, I, I don't I'll give it thirty seconds. There's another grant that I'm helping to, another grant. There are other funds that I, as my work at Brock, am trying to help people access. But once again, it's got to do with vehicles. They've even upped the incentive from three thousand to five thousand. But they haven't loosened any of the
Right.
A, a, any of the constraints, which makes it virtually impossible for anybody to access that money. I, I, I don't get it. I don't understand what the purpose is.
Good intentions that just don't seem to produce.
Right, because legislatively they're, they're constrained.
Well, what about this concept? Do you think there is enough? There obviously is enough supply out there to do these sorts of things, you know, the re-converting. But is there the will, do you think? Just your conversations with people or just what your gut tells you about, how many residents do you think would, would take advantage of such a program?
I, I think that there, go ahead.
Jim.
Going back to World War Two days. I can remember as a child growing up, up in the northern part of the state that there were two and sometimes three families in the larger houses that, that lived that way, at least during the war and for some time after because of necessity. There just wasn't the money to with the individual family to support a house because things were so costly. There was rationing of food and everything else that would go into everyday living. That's why we have so many larger houses today that are in such disrepair because that need long since passed. And the houses got used for things they weren't designed for. And they're in disrepair and most of them that were utilizing the livability of folks back in the wartime are empty today.
Yeah.
And so that, that tells that, that's a, a big a big item. I, I think in this area.
Once again, Mike.
Yep. Go ahead.
Once again, my, my comment is really a comment and not a, not a question, even though I made the suggestion when I come up with questions. But you, you asked the question. And I think that what we have today with people focusing on short term rentals is reflective of a, a real situation of that that property owners are afraid of. So is there the will? I don't know. What I have heard is that sometimes, and I know this because of some of my work now. Sometimes it is very difficult to get a long-term renter out if they are not abiding by the appropriate. You're laughing, Jerry. I hope it's in.
No, I can give you first-hand knowledge.
Example, okay.
Give you a first-hand knowledge if you want it.
I'm not sure because we're on camera.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it, it happened to me personally, so I can give it up. I, I was in court yesterday to have a tenant move out who had absolutely had to hire an attorney. I lost a year's rent. She's been there one year.
No rent.
Vermont Legal Aid kept propping her up, kept propping her up. And no reason. She owned a, she owns a property in Troy, New York. So if you look at those things and how the state supports those people who are staying in those, there is no way in hell I would have another rental property. So those stories are everywhere. And when I tell them to people, a lot of people shake their head, yeah, they've talked to people that have had that happen. So if, if someone said to me, I have a perfect place to get fifty thousand dollars from the state and put a little apartment in my house, perfect. It's all kind of set up for it. Would I do it? No way. No way would I do it. And that's, that sentiment you're gonna find all over the place. So if, if, if it's not, if, if developers aren't gonna come in and make a housing, an effort to put up maybe a building that is nice and it's managed and that management keeps a real tight rein on things going on, rents being missed, instead of calling and saying, do I have to pay the rent? We're like, you know, take a month and try to, that's the way we reacted and look where it got us. So you know, and the other thing is, I think, I think that VRAP perhaps did us a big disservice, but people got used to not paying rent.
Because somebody was paying for them.
They was paying for them for a year and a half. And I think that it just became I can't do this anymore and I, and I don't want to do this anymore. There's, there's a lot to it. And, and so my first-hand knowledge of that, there's no way I'd ever rent again. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. So, and I think that that sentiment is, is.
Pretty much.
It's so, so prevalent that there wouldn't be much interest among developers to put rentals.
I think, I know, I, I, I think that if, if you could, if there was a fire sale on a house and, and a developer could buy it cheap, Paul's a great example. He does, he buys and sells homes. He does that a lot. But he needs to get the right one. And, and, and with housing up here, how many of those right ones come about unless unfortunately somebody passes and a family's looking to move it? There, there's a very, there's a very fine line between affordable houses for developers to buy to make apartments out of and, you know, the, the houses that are available. And, and, and so anyway, I, I just see it firsthand all the time because of the business I'm in. I think there's interest, but it's got to be, it's got to be affordable. And I think that's where the in lies the problem.
The, the other thing, I think it's, it's that more about homeownership than it is about rental. Because the homeownership, the person who own, who buys the house, I mean, Habitat's done some good work. I, I, I know, Norm, I've seen some of those developments in Rutland City. The people who are able to buy, whether they're duplexes or standalone single families, it, it's, it's a great opportunity for them, they have skin in the game, they have to take care of it.
Agreed.
That makes sense. But when you have rental units and what I have heard, just as the story, your testimonial speaks to me, that is, that's problematic. And that's problematic because there isn't a clear pathway for the homeowner to be able to ensure their own security, particularly if they rent out of their own home. And, and, and I think that that, that becomes problematic because that's lack of accountability for the person occupying the space and that the state, the city, or whomever doesn't take an active enough role to place the accountability where it needs to be. I'm all for helping the people in need, but some people, they may be in need, they may not be in need, but they know how to game the system and that's not okay. So, I mean, that, that's my personal perspective. So that's not really germane to our question here. But those are the things that I have heard are problematic. So it's much easier to do a short-term rental where you know that after a couple of weeks or a month, the person, the, the person or the group is going to be gone and you don't have to worry about freeloaders or creating eviction notices because of improper upkeep or sanitation issues that are caused by, by renters. And that's another big thing that I've seen or heard about in the city, both. It's appalling what some people live in because they've created the situations. So, anyway, thought that's worth, sorry.
Now, a housing discussion is, is, I mean, we're all over, and, and, and I'm, I'm the same way, but we're all over the place. I mean, there's, there are people who, who can't afford housing, don't have jobs, who are still, who are homeless. And then there are people who have, have nice jobs, who, who can afford, but can't find anything that they want, but with, at, at the price they can afford. And, and it's not, it's not just more houses, it's, 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 where do we need the housing? Because it's gotta be spread out, you can't just build houses, build apartments for the homeless because other people need it also. And it's something that, that just, from my perspective, has got to come from pretty far up in the administration for, and I don't even, I don't even name the state. I mean, it's just, if something's gonna be done by housing, someone's gotta come up with a plan. And, and nobody has a plan, there's no plan, we all talk about it. Someone throws a little money off here and you can get money to do, to make changes, but, and there's money and, and there's, there are funds available also for people to build, to build affordable housing, large buildings where, where they can do more, but, but there's no overall plan. And even as we talk about it, and I'm not criticizing, but all we can do is talk about a little problem there, a little bit we can do. If we took every possible conversion of a, a large unit to more than what it is now in, in, in the, in the town, we'll forget, even in the area, we wouldn't, we wouldn't put a dent into the homeless problem.
But the, back, pigging backing on that, the homeless problem is not just a question of housing. The homeless problem is partly a, a problem of education and, and understanding systems and being trained to live in community. Because some people who are homeless find their community among those people who are also homeless. And the part of what is happening there is that if you really wanna eradicate homelessness, you have to have a tiered approach to services, mental health, management of funds and resources and allocation of transitional housing from whether it's temporary housing in a motel, not that I'm saying I favor that, but from there to a, 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 a common situation for, for dwelling to a, a single efficiency unit for a single person or a, you know, a multi-unit apartment for a, a small family that would then go to a, you know, participation in a, a, a bigger housing complex. And that each step of the way, there need to be resources allocated for the support of those people as they're going along. More support for people at the lower end where they don't know how to, to interact, to access services, to, to, to manage a budget and then gradually release control over to them as they demonstrate greater and greater competency in making, in decision-making. And that includes mental health.
Yeah, so those are solutions, but the, the bottom line is just not a house. If, if you did all that, you still, you still need to provide housing.
Norm.
I'm, I'm kinda lost. In part because I don't think we're talking from a very sound base. I don't think we have information to really answer the questions that Logan put for, we don't have sufficient information.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where we get it.
Well, I can address that.
I don't think we have at our hands sufficient information, and it's not just the study. But what came to mind in all of this is the scoping study from a couple, several years ago where we talked about building a village center.
Well, it was part of the, the West Rutland, Center Rutland.
Yeah. About building a village center, about, you know, and somehow that seems to me to have to tie into this. And what kind of housing would go there and that kind of thing.
It's always problematic in, in Rutland Town where a village center would, would go. I mean, it is, if Center Rutland really is the place or not.
I understand that. All I'm saying is that this is a warfarce, I agree with what, certainly what Dana says, I agree with what Sherman says. But I think somehow we need more focus before we can proceed to answer these questions.
Okay, okay, so I did talk to Logan a little bit about that. He said that there is municipal planning grant money from, from the state, you know, we use some for the pocket park. There is money available now for housing and market analysis. So that would kind of get to, you know, if the jobs are there, if, if the draw is there, the, the people draw is there.
So we study whether or not there's jobs available.
And, and what there is for housing, what, what the need for housing would be, we could combine those two. So we could go for one of those. Rutland City is now doing a, a how, just a housing assessment, so that's coming up. And then be good to blend, to see what's in there and see if there's any crossover with Rutland Town there. There is an existing county housing settlement, but that's for twenty-seven towns and is, is less applicable than the, the other two. So we, we could, we could go to the select board and say, you know, let's go for an, a municipal planning grant and get an, an assessment done and get that information that you're looking for.
I think this is, is, is too wide of an issue to settle it in a couple of weeks. In fact, there may well never be a real hundred percent answer.
Yeah.
Um, I'm thinking of the, the situation that state of Vermont thrust upon the area was housing problem. And some of the fallout from that is very evident today still. And how do you, how do you balance that off of what, what regularly would be if, if that didn't happen? The police chief told me that prior to that, even in the coldest days of the winter, the numbers of homeless people living under bridges or wherever, you could count on one hand. Now it would take several hands.
You know, I, I, I agree with you. I, I personally, my wife and I one night, we spent the night until four o'clock in the morning supporting people who were out looking to see what homeless people were on the street in the city, this is all the city of Rutland, and they, they found one person. This is, this was before COVID.
Yeah, I remember.
So, so my, the rest of my point is that I think we have to get beyond that situation that was thrust upon us to find out where the real world sits.
Okay.
Mary Beth. Um, well, I'm just thinking about the, what housing solutions have been discussed in the past. And do you guys remember the proposed development kind of by the hospital and the, well, it's more by the mall, off of Middle Road.
Yep, by John Deere.
Yeah, and I think there is like generally support for something like that where it's like, you know, I mean, it's like an apartment complex basically, but it could house a lot of people and it's like managed and nice and new and there's a couple of different types of apartments.
Yeah, there was, there was good public support for that, people were excited about that.
Failed because of a lack of support.
Right, it failed, I think because the, the landowner decided not to sell it, right, or, yeah, right. So, but if we could find somewhere else that's suitable like that and do like one big project, I mean, even like people don't have to, even if it's just kind of like people go there for a couple of years, like while they're starting a family, you know, and then can move out, yeah, whatever their situation is, or they're traveling nurses or while they're looking for a house, you know.
Traveling doctors too now.
Like our house, I mean, we, we were lucky to buy our house eight years ago before the prices went way up. But this was our starter house, you know, it's like a two-bedroom and one bath, nine hundreds per view. So for four, you know, two kids and two parents and two dogs, it's pretty tight. But, you know, we're kind of like, well, I guess we're gonna be here.
As I sit here, listen, I think we need to start from a different base. We need to find out what that base is. And I think, please feel free to disagree me with me. I think we need to know what the demand for housing in Rutland Town is that is not being met.
And that's what an assessment would do.
And so far I haven't felt from the survey and other materials and Logan, et cetera, that we're not even approaching that. And, and the reason I say it is this. You know, are we not, do we not have enough supply of single-family homes? Do we not have, is there enough need to consider something on the level of Hickory Street that the Housing, Rutland Housing Authority built? Which is essentially low-income housing, but I think there's some market rentals there too. My information, I spent what a year down there building a house, helping to build a house for Habitat. You know, and if that's what we need, is the community ready for it? You know, ready for that kind of city, inner-city kind of development in a, in a town, in a community that still feels that it's rural.
Yeah.
And, um,
Yeah.
Because there are ways to do that, almost easier than doing other things. Not, not that it doesn't have its red tape and hoops to jump through, but, and is there a property to support it, available?
Yeah, that's all part of an assessment.
And, um, until we get there, until we get that kind of information and other information that, I, I don't think the discussion is, is, we can go anywhere.
Okay, yep. We heard you.
I'm sorry?
We heard you. Mary Beth, you, you wanted to just.
Yeah, just for the first point that Norman, um, so this was a couple of years ago after COVID, the town of, or the Rutland Town School, I think the principals had a list of like people that would call the school asking about housing, like they wanted to live in town. So I think they had a list of people that were looking, that they were trying to help, so maybe they still have a list or maybe that was years ago and they don't, but, I don't know. But I know that they were getting calls from people.
Some businesses may have lists like that too.
Like the hospital, I think has, yeah.
Right. Dana.
So this is, um, piggybacking on both what Norman has said and Mary Beth added, as well as what Logan was raising when we had the discussion last week in terms of, you know, availability. What would be helpful for me, and I'll state it that way, because that would help me inform my contributions, is an inventory, a spreadsheet of all of the housing types and numbers, number, a number by type in Rutland Town, we probably have access to this somehow, somewhere. And after we identify each type of housing, you know, single-family duplex, how many we have, we would identify also what is or could be in the near future on the market, what the likely price would be or what the appraisal is of that property, or what its assessed value is. And then it would be helpful for me to know how many people are inquiring, we could do this in conjunction with Realtors, how many people are inquiring about each type of housing? We could survey our Realtor partners and find out how many questions are there and whether families, what families are looking for. With, with, with respect to revolving housing stock, I will just talk about my neighborhood for just a minute. We have had, and this is, on the one hand, this is sad, but on the other hand, it's a sign of, you know, growing opportunity. In the last year to eighteen months, we have had one, two, three, four, I believe, four neighbors in a relatively short area of development pass away. And those homes have turned over and young families have moved in. And I think that that's a great sign because those homes which had one or maybe two people in them, and they were fairly big, consider a colonial, with at least four, if not five bedrooms, now being occupied by five or six family members. Two parents and three or four children. Anyway, the point is that in order to be able to fully understand what the profile is in our town, we need to know what we have for stock, how much that is going for and what the demand is that Realtors have found in terms of houses and what the Realtors tell us about those obstacles. Then we could make a more informed.
I don't see us, us doing all that work.
No, I don't see us doing all of that work. But that's, if we're asking the questions, that's what I would need based on what Norman was saying and what Mary Beth was saying. That would help me as a planning.
If we did an assessment, yeah, we.
We would do that, those are the things that I would want in that assessment, I guess. We would do that. Those are the things that I would want in that assessment, I guess that's the short way of saying it.
Basically, what you're saying is, do we, you know, we need to know what the supply is and we need to know what the demand is.
That's exactly right. But I'm, I've done it in in a way that clearly delineates for myself what I would be looking for in that.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna try to get back to the original. Question here is, is what, what message do we get from? The housing survey that we want to pass on to the. And we're talking about solutions and situations and uh. But one of the message, and I was looking, so it's just, one of the messages is that a significant percentage of uh. Rutland Town residents. Don't think that. Building new housing is very important. That's what this seems to say.
Which, which one in?
It's unquestioned too, and.
Yep, as I'm looking at right now.
Oh, one is like red is not important and then dark green is.
So I did it, I did it the other way, then then they think that it is important. I was confused by four being missing, that's all.
Right, so between the four and five, which are the two highest of importance. You have uh sixty percent of the population saying that it is important, yeah.
You'd think wouldn't be higher, but.
But still sixty percent is more than a majority, so.
Well, does anyone wanna make, we ready to enter, yes.
In, as part of that message. What does new housing mean? Does it mean new one family housing, houses or?
Right.
Apartments or? Sort of doesn't tell us here.
Oh, well, so in, on question number four. It's like what housing types do you support in Rutland Town? And it looks like um from that green bar. That, you know, detached, single family home duplex and townhouse are the most preferred.
So Mayor Beth, if I may comment. One of the problems that I had with this survey. Is what is that it was um heavily subjective.
Meaning?
Meaning that it was just people's opinion about what they liked or what they thought. And for me, the, I'm a data guy. I like to see what the facts are rather than what someone's opinion is. Even though I have no problem offering my own opinion. But tha- that's why I was saying, if we're talking about the uh a planning grant. For uh gathering information uh on an audit or an assessment. I I would want those specific things uh addressed. Because although this is good, it tells you what people are thinking and what they're feeling and philosophically how they're located. I would like to know what the tangible. What do we, what's our current situation? How much of a shortage do we think we have, how much of a shortage do we have based on what Norman was saying in terms of supply and demand? And what realtors have for tangible uh data about requests for particular homes.
Okay. So does anyone wanna make a motion? That we suggest, wha- what's so funny about?
I I I'll make a motion, Barbara. I I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommends to the Select Board. That we take uh advantage of the opportunity to pursue a housing planning grant. And that uh the Planning Commission would take point on developing the questions and criteria by which. Uh, that planning grant would be. Uh, implemented with a focus on assessing our um current stock. And the uh relative objective need. Uh, based on uh Realtor data.
Are you basically saying that we wanna get? Permission to apply for funding for? An assessment? As Barbara termed it.
We don't have any uh authority to pursue these on our own, so if we think that a planning grant is good. My understanding is somebody on this, of this body has to make a motion that would either be. Uh, you know, seconded and supported or not, because the Select Board is the one that would have to pursue the grant.
I wasn't suggesting it anything other than the Select Board. When I was looking toward the terminology, Barbara talked about an assessment grant earlier on. And what I was asking you, is that basically what you're?
It is, it is a planning grant, like Dana said, um, that what would be done would be an assessment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and and I think um i- if we go through the municipal planning grant, I think. Um, they entertain housing and or housing and market analysis assessments. So probably wanna throw the market in as well.
I I would be um more more than amenable to including the word marketing in my motion.
Mary Beth.
And that would be, once we got the grant, um, we wouldn't do the actual work, right? It would be the Regional Planning Commission that would do.
Either the Regional Planning Commission or we hire someone.
Okay.
Yep.
With that we would pay for through the grant.
Right.
Exactly.
So do we want, do we wanna tie that back to the survey at all? As a result of the survey, are we doing, I'm just asking. As a result of the survey, we think this is the next thing or? Or do we just want to?
After considering. The, the survey that was presented to us. That's my motion. So if you'd like to make a friendly amendment that we do an introductory element to my emotion.
I I just wanted to know whether it was standalone or.
No, it's, it's based on the discussion we're having tonight, and that discussion wouldn't have happened if we didn't have this in front of us, so I I'm more than. Be added.
Is everybody clear on the motion?
If you'd like me to state it again.
Yes.
After thoughtful consideration by the Planning Commission, I would like to make a motion, ha- having examined the. Housing survey for the last two meetings, I would like to make a motion that we pursue a municipal uh planning grant. That would focus on an assessment of our current housing stock. Uh, and uh look at it through a marketing lens to determine a gap between. Um, the supply and demand. And that that recommendation should go to the Select Board uh for their consideration.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I'll second.
All right, ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion, that Bill's gonna have. He'll get it. He'll get it on paper. All those in favor.
I'll help you with the bill if you want me to.
They say aye if you're in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, it passed. Jerry, do you wanna?
Sure, I think I, I just, I'm not a big fan of taking all of our taxpayer dollars and continuing to do studies that lead nowhere. That's just an opinion. We've thrown a lot of opinions out there and me especially, but that's another one of mine.
You're doing fine.
Okay, that's valid. Okay.
Only being politically correct, nor.
It only lasts for five minutes for any of us.
So we've got uh also an old business tonight, we'll move along from housing. The update on S two thirteen and the River Corridors. Um, I don't have much of an update. Um, it 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 did pass the Senate, I think I mentioned that before, it's it's in House Committee. Deliberations right now, so we'll just have to wait on that.
So I um I testified on it.
In the House? Okay, well.
This is my first time at the State House, it's pretty cool.
How was uh, how was the reception and what what?
Good.
What's gonna happen?
Um, well, so that was pretty much at the beginning of the process and so they asked me to testify in the wetland portion. Um, and it was on behalf of DEXA Limited, so through my work. And it's focused on the wetland restoration piece.
Okay, which is another part, yes, not just River Corridors.
Right, it's um, has to do with flood um protection in general and. Yeah, they didn't have that much to say, but I think it's kind of early on with the house process.
All right, exciting. Okay, well, you can be our S two thirteen expert going forward. Let's move now to the revised subdivision forms then.
The um, excuse me, Barbara, I. I'm gonna take my opinions and go back to work. I gotta go to work.
Oh, boy.
I'm gonna leave, but you, Jim is available to.
Yes.
If there's any other things, I apologize, but I've gotta go.
Yep, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
You're back in the voting mode. Thanks, Jerry.
Is this something we're supposed to be looking at?
Um, I think, well, it it was emailed out to you for everyone just to take a look at. Were extra copies, I think, here.
Barbara has them all?
Yeah, I got them all.
Oh, there you go.
It might be a couple small typos. So, yeah, Bill, why don't?
Pages or eight pa- pieces of paper, it's all right.
I've, I've got. Sherman, do you, you're all set?
No, I I haven't, thank you.
So, um, Bill, why don't we um turn it over to you on what has changed?
So, if anybody, if you remember the, like, if you're looking at what we've used now. The forms, the application form, the applicant uses and fills out was based. Explicitly on the original forms that were used many, many years ago. Uh, and I took those and just made them so we could actually see them online easier, so. Uh, no, never did any overhaul on them, but as as time goes on, we've, we find ourselves asking. Questions of the applicant consistently. Um, and it's usually something that could be addressed in the application form, so I took.
So we wouldn't have to answer, we wouldn't have to ask the questions at the uh meeting, it would come with these answers already.
That would be, that'd be part of the goal, yes, so.
It'd be nice.
There's, there's a two-page, which is a verification sheet, which is something we started, started using a while ago. But I've expanded it to give us, to reflect, first of all, the changes on the application, but to give the appropriate kind of information, so. And I also, um, so I expanded the instructions for the person applying. There's more than there used to be, but it gives us the information that we're looking for, and I tried to get specific, so. Uh, rather than having a form for minor and then a form for major. If you look like Form One is just the applicant's information. And then Form Two is the only other, is the only other thing. There's additional section. If they have a major subdivision, but it doesn't require them to say, well, I gotta fill out all three, or so it just, it makes it a little bit. Easier. Uh, I also put in like some of the requirements that we want. Uh, six hard copies of a preliminary sketch plan or survey preferred. Because the application right now, a sketch plan which can be a hand drawing is acceptable. We don't usually get those.
Where are the criteria?
In the instructions.
Okay, that's uh.
Yeah, so the first two pages that I gave her was, was like our verification. Yeah, I think like the first two pages, I think, were the verification, that's, that's, that's like internal, so we can use those. Uh, so I put in here like, you know, a preliminary sketch plan or a survey which is preferred. Um, a digital copy, we've been a rash of digital copy before, but that would make it easier to to send out to everybody so they can see it. A cover letter to include a description of the changes, including a detail of the parcels being created and the individual sizes. Nowhere have we ever asked for that before, and it always comes up, and that was kind of highlighted by the. DeTeal one where it became very ambiguous quickly what was actually being asked about, so. You know, I just, I just, I expanded, I expanded the instructions to make them more detailed. So that way it it reduces the number of questions that we would have to ask when they get here. And then. Uh, the, for number two is just, is is all the questions, but I put them in a different, just a visual format. Before, they were very tight and, you you know, they were, they were all on one page and it was very hard to read, so. I made them bigger, easier to read, uh, and then at the end. Put a list for the applicant to put down what requirement they want a waiver for and why. So that we come to the meeting with a understanding of why they want a waiver for it, but it puts it on them to to do that, and it's there ahead of time, so. We can all see it.
Right, that's Form One that everyone would be filling out.
Normally, yes, that's the o- old Form One, and then for the old Form, I'm sorry, the old Form Two. And then the old Form Three was a, was a, for major subdivisions, but this, I just added it at the end. As part of, as part of that, for additional, the additional requirement, so.
I like.
Where, where are your additional requirements?
On that page you're holding, says at the top right there, this, this section for major.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yep, I I just saw the numbers being sequenced after twenty five.
One through twenty five, and and so on, the first page of the instructions is one through twenty five is for minor and then. Once, and then shall include one through thirty for for major.
Uh, so one, one comment, Bill, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, you have the uh reasons for the waiver request. Um, under these additional requirements, it seems to imply that that's the only reason that you have to put in. Uh, th- those additional um. Uh, reasons for the request for waiver. So I, what I would do is I would put that same uh box on, on the second page under twenty five.
Uh, I thought about that, so I I I, maybe I can put in the instructions about that too, but it didn't fit. Cause, cause I use tables like to do it and it wasn't, I I I ran out of room for the lines. So I I'll, I can put the formatting certainly and see if I can get, if I can get them over there.
So, so the other thing that you could do is uh make it clear that this uh request for waivers for the whole document, whether it's one to twenty five or. Or the additional ones, and then then it will be clear. At least for a small mind like mine.
No, that makes sense, I'll, I'll see if I can. Whether, whether I add it there or somewhere else, be like, this is, this is for, for requirements one through thirty.
Yes.
Requested waiver, yes, and something like that, yeah.
Absolutely.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Um, and then back to like Former One, the, the cover page just updated it to expand like. Add an email address, cause that's not, I've never been there before, just, just. That.
The other thing you might do, Bill, is uh under twenty five, uh see the request for waiver section on the next page or something like that as well. So that they would know that there's something else to complete after twenty five.
Okay.
That way it would refer them to that so that it, it, there's no confusion with.
Actually, yes, the requested waivers, variances, and reads therefore uh included. In the section at the end of.
The following page or whatever.
In, in the section at the end of this application.
At the end of this application, perfect, yep, that covers it.
Under the instructions to apply for and file.
Yeah.
Have we had a problem with people trying to file? You know, either this.
We did.
What's?
Absolutely, we did, that, that was why that's planted there is because there were some subdivisions that were, there were some subdivision my Lars found. That were never came through here. We, we, we did some that were re- re- basically like retroactive. Yeah, so absolutely, we did.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, that's pretty bold there on the instruction page there.
That's the old. I wanted to be clear.
It, it should be the, this is the new one, isn't it?
Uh, no, that's the old one.
That's the old one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the new one is.
I, I did. Yeah.
One through twelve.
So that, but that warning or whatever you wanna call it.
I, I had included in that, cause I, I wasn't sure I wanted to put it, but I had, I had not included that. As a statement on there. So I, I, I was, I, I'm gonna include it, I, I might include it at the bottom of the application. But um, be I, I, that, that, that box is, is not there, it's saying like, yeah, you can't file it until you, it's approved, so.
Yeah, so you'll find a place for it.
Yeah.
What you're saying, okay.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, they're getting easier and easier.
And then the verification form, I, I don't think most saw that until like Ben, but, you know, I, I. You know, I I I took another look at this and because there were some times when when we talking about. Approving it and was there was a, I don't know, it's a debate, but there was some question on what part required action and what part didn't. So if you notice that on on here, as as you go down through this. There's, I put like in brackets, like action needed, where I I I believe that's where where there's a couple of sections that where it is, where we have to take a vote on it. Some places you did, some places you didn't, but so make sure everybody agreed with that was where you did. So as whoever is is in charge of the. The approval process knows at that decision point, there needs to be a a vote.
Okay.
Um and then I left, I did the parcel sizes, so. I did twelve or sixteen parcels, because I figured we weren't probably gonna do any more than that. So. That's why I unlike the verification, I put.
Oh, right.
What's the current size and then how and then we can write in how many we're creating, you know, as we as we go along, so.
Um so, Bill, can I make another suggestion? Can you just bold those bracketed items that says action needed?
Yeah.
Because that's to us, that's the planning.
Yeah, the verification is is an internal thing.
Yeah, I I think it's great. Uh I like the improvement. It's just that flags it for us and we can catch it out of room.
Yeah.
Brief plans.
Yeah.
And then, Bill, you fill out the the subdivision is approved, denied, or whatever, based on.
That's that that's this this is, the only thing I really fill on here would be the number. Whatever number is assigned to the next the next one, but the the intent was that the person. Running the approval process is filling in all the blanks, because they're the ones making sure everything is. I I can say, yes.
This is this is based on our vote at the.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Is, will this form be required for it to be filed?
The the verification, so so there there there's also, there's also a letter, which I don't, which which we've, which gets filled out and sent to the person saying it's approved. The copies of all that stuff just goes in the envelope, so that way that's just there, so that way down the road. Someone's like, oh, well, we did, did you check this? And we're like, yeah, we did. We said, we said, we said we had it, so the form's not in the envelope. We said, yeah, we had it, so it's it was there at some point, so.
But this gets filed in whatever. Application, yeah.
Yeah.
For each application.
Yes.
So I don't think we need a motion. Just need to thank Bill for.
Did you see? Did you see some typos?
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great, yes.
Yeah, I just had one, I just saw one typo.
Okay.
Under the instructions.
Yeah.
Three, you see number three down there on the first page?
Yeah.
At the bottom, just above it, there's A and C. I think that should just be C probably.
Oh, no, it actually should be C and D.
Oh, C and D, okay.
Yeah, you're right. It formatted weird, so I was having, it was fighting me.
I never find.
Thanks, Norm, I mean, Chairman.
Under additional requirements, number thirty. I guess the second sentence to me seems doesn't, I fret it, doesn't make sense. Doesn't seem to go anywhere.
Oh. Cut off. Maybe we can cut off. I'll look at it.
Okay, it just.
Yeah, it looks like B bled into number thirty.
Yeah, I mean, it may just be, it may have been cut off, yeah. Take a look.
Okay.
Thirty doesn't begin with before a subdivision proposal can be approved.
Yeah, but there's a line.
Yeah, that that whole thing just didn't make sense.
Yeah.
It's somehow.
So it start, number thirty starts up here. This is this is thirty.
Well, that's what I thought, but the second sentence just doesn't go anywhere, doesn't finish.
Okay, I'll I'll, because I I literally cut and paste these from the other one, so I I will check.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we are down to announcements. Agenda. Anyone have any? I've got a couple. Uh the next Select Board meeting on the twenty third. The Diamond Run Mall owner is going to be present. And um. Giving an update on what might be some new developments up there. Uh he he has promised updates before. They weren't really updates. Um but it it's always interesting to hear what what they're trying to do with the Diamond Run Mall. So that's on the twenty third and um. The town is trying to set up a meeting with the state and the Cortina Inn, because there are some. Um some rumors that uh the state may be uh interested in purchasing the Cortina. Um and that would have some effects on the town. So I don't, no details yet and when that meeting's gonna be. But I could certainly pass those along when we do find out. Um, the school budget is up for another vote, and that's by ballot only. Everyone but.
April thirty.
Yeah, is the due date. That's about all I have. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to the minutes of March twenty eighth.
Let's approve.
There a second?
Second.
March twenty eighth minutes. Any discussion?
Um I asked Bill, but um he said that's the way it appeared on the screen, that Logan spells his name. That looks like it says log on. And if that's the case, then that's okay, but I didn't.
Yeah, it is L O G A N.
It is L O G A N. That wasn't what was on the screen.
Said O N a couple of times.
Right, on a on his nameplate thing?
So it is in there. It is in there, okay.
There's O N.
No, it's A N, never mind.
Okay, we ready to approve the minutes of March twenty eighth?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
I I'm abstaining with Mayor.
Yeah, you two abstainers. Okay, anything else?
I got one question.
Yeah.
Really, it's uh something that was in the works back last fall. Solar project up on Thomas's property there. How's that standing?
Um, I I haven't checked recently, but I would. Assume that maybe the archaeological component of it might be slowing it down. They they had to get, they 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 wanted to do some clearing. Of. A all, a a pre-designated archaeological site. And they had to get us permission to do that. And then there it was going to be, they had to do um. A series of reports back on what they're, what they were doing and what they were finding and then. Cutting that by the state. I'll check and see if there's anything else that's holding things up, but that would be my guess.
Well. I'm I'm no fan of that particular spot is uh. The spot may be okay, but the access to it to me is a ticking dime bomb.
Yeah.
I, that's the big problem I have.
And that may be part of the the delaying discussions too, what AOT or V Trans wants to do.
Access from Route Seven during construction? Or access generally?
Uh the access off of Route Seven.
For construction or generally?
Coming out of there, um. Stopping going north on Route Seven. Uh slowing down prior to the turn and then. If you've got a big truck, you're you're gonna have to pull out into the the other lane in order to make the.
Yeah, yeah. The curb cut's not very wide. The developer has said that there there wouldn't be much traffic going in and out. Once the, once it's, you know, constructed. It'd be minimal. It would be during the construction period that there would be traffic and.
That's true, but. Um, we don't need to add any potential for. Highway accidents anywhere, let alone there.
Right, right. It's it's pretty narrow, the lanes there.
Where are we talking about again?
Um, it's like a a cross from the the appliance store in US.
Yeah.
Seven, uh across from.
Yeah.
Down to intersect. It's it's on the right. It 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 does not look like a street. It looks.
A cornfield. Yeah.
All there is. There's no break in the sidewalk. If there is a sidewalk.
It's like wide enough for a tractor.
You you go along looking for it. You you don't see it.
Right, I know what you were talking about now. Yep, it was, I was just struggling to.
It's a car, it's a cross from.
I got it.
Verizon and the the garden store and that a little further down. And it's right across that area.
Yeah, that's the archaeological area down at that end.
No, I I know where we are. It's on the same side as Max Deal.
Yeah.
It it's just a little beyond that.
Yeah.
North of Max Deal, correct.
I I know where we are now. I I was just struggling to.
So, good questions, Jim. I'll I'll uh report back next meeting on where it is.
Okay.
Process. Section two forty eight. Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're adjourned.